We're going to start with Mike Riley. Again, Mike is our subject matter expert here. He is the executive director of the Environmental Center and one of the four co-chairs of the Citywide Transportation Advisory Committee, which is a citizens committee that helped work with staff and consultants to develop the transportation system plan that is being considered now by the steering committee and the city council. So, Mike, I turn it over to you.
Thanks, Sid. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to chat with you today. I'm going to share my screen here, so hopefully this will work. It worked a minute ago. Can people see the screen? Is that a thumbs up?
Yes, that's a thumbs up.
Great. Let me see if I can get back to the beginning. Okay. Okay. So I want to talk to you a little bit today about what is the TSP and what's at stake, kind of going over why I think it's important that we care about this, and what makes it up, what we've accomplished so far today, what still has to be decided in the coming month or so in terms of the decision making initially, and then a little bit about what's going to happen over the summer as well to get to final adoption of the TSP. I am going to focus a fair bit on funding because I think in many ways it's probably the most important part of the discussion. Without adequate resources, we can't get a whole lot done in terms of changing or improving our transportation system. So it's pretty important we talk about that. So I wanted to just really kind of talk about why I think transportation is important and why I, as a citizen, as well as the executive director of the Environmental Center, am involved in transportation issues. And that is, first of all, what I've really realized over the last really decade or so is that transportation, what's most important to me is that it's really an equity issue. I think our transportation system is very automobile focused. It's not very safe at the moment. It doesn't help people who have various disabilities. This is a picture of Charlene, who's one of the members of the Citizen Transportation Advisory, the Citywide Transportation Advisory Committee with me, who was blind. I don't think we serve people who are not able-bodied very well. And I think that often the safety issues also raise a whole series of equity concerns. At a meeting I was at, we had a gentleman who was retired, who's lived in Ben for about five years and was very discouraged at how difficult it was for him to cross Butler Market Road when he and his wife were trying to go out for a walk. I think those are all equity concerns that our system does not deal with very well. And I think in particular for people who are really, don't have the luxury or the resources to have a car and get around, they need other ways to get around safely, whether that's walking, biking, or taking transit. Let's see if I can get this to go forward. Okay. I've talked a little bit about safety. I think safety is very important. As I said, our system is very car dominant at this time, and I think it should be shifted. This is a picture of a couple of kids walking across a crosswalk, and for me anyway, it gives a sense of a car kind of barreling down on people in the community. And I think our system could do a lot more to make it a much safer place for people who are using alternatives to the car, or need to use alternatives to the car. And then last, I'm involved because climate change is an important issue for the Environmental Center and for me personally. Transportation emissions are the biggest source of carbon emissions in the state of Oregon, and they're the only source that continues to decline and that really has not been addressed. And there's all kinds of different things that need to be done to change that. And one of the places that we really make that happen is at the local level. So that's why this TSP and our transportation system plan is super important from a climate change perspective. We're dealing with the fuels and the sources of fuels and trying to electrify and reduce the carbon intensity of fuels, but vehicle miles traveled continue to rise, and we need to figure out ways to get those to go in a different direction if we want to make a difference in Oregon's climate footprint. So I also just think it's important to remember that, and I think this slogan is very true. It comes from the city of Ben. Great communities don't happen by chance, and we need to plan for our future. And if we want to have a walkable, bikeable, people-friendly community that's safe to move around in all modes, we have to put a lot of effort into the planning to make that happen. So a TSP, quickly, I'm not going to linger on this. It's a plan that's required under state law to guide transportation investments and over a 20-year period. Ben recently updated its urban growth plan a couple of years ago, and the transportation plan that we're updating now is really meant to help Ben achieve the goals of that urban growth plan for our community going forward. It looks at, counts for projected growth. It takes into account projects and programs and policies. It's supposed to look at all modes, has to meet the legal requirements, and it has to coordinate with other entities in the region. These are some of the, you know, specific regulatory requirements. I'm not going to spend much time here, but there is a set of legal requirements the city has to follow in terms of developing a transportation system plan. This is just to give you a sense of the decision-making structure. This is where the steering, I'm sorry, this is the Citywide Transportation Advisory Committee that I am co-chairing along with Karen Augustofson from the Builders Association, Ruth Williamson, who is a local activist and been very involved in civic affairs in the community, and Steve Holtberg, who is an attorney that represents developers and other people in land use processes in the community. We're the four co-chairs. There's been about 20 other people that have participated, including Sid, has been part of it. And we are advisory to the steering committee, which is made up of the city council, plus a member of the county commissioners, Tony Debone, a member of the Ben Planning Commission, Lindsay Hopper, and then representative from ODOT, and I always forget his name. I think it's Rick Williams. Did I get that right?
Gary Farnsworth.
Sorry. And then ultimately, the city council, though, really is the final decision-maker on what's going to happen on the ground with our TSP here in the city of Ben. So we're advisory, and these guys make the decisions and approve as we go, and will ultimately approve the TSP or not, or change it. What's been accomplished to date with the transportation system plan? We've been at this for almost two years, maybe even a little bit more than two years now. We developed this set of goals earlier. At the beginning of the process, there was some controversy around this, and I expect that there may be a few more fireworks on Thursday at the steering committee meeting, because some of these may get revisited on Thursday. These are, I would call them compromised goals. It represents lots of different perspectives. The group worked on them hard. Then we had some fiction with the city council, I would say, about the goals, and then ultimately, this set of goals was adopted by the city council over a year ago and really shaped the whole basis, the whole basis for the process as we've gone forward from that time. Another piece that's been accomplished is that a little over, I guess, a year ago or so, or maybe not quite a year ago, we adopted something called the Citywide Transportation Framework. This is really kind of an approach to the overall system, basically saying that we know that congestion and traffic flow are real important to the community, and we're going to address that as well as safety concerns across the community are probably the two biggest things we've heard throughout the process. By implementing a set of actions that broadly speaking are defined here, and that is that we're going to implement a variety of what are called efficiency measures. So things like improving the timing of signals in the community, trying to improve transit in the community so that we get more people riding transit, doing something called transportation demand management, which is working with like a large employer, St. St. Charles, to try to change some of the timing of how their people move in and out of their business, so it doesn't affect the traffic flow quite the same way. And then a combination of infrastructure projects, some incremental widening of very specifically defined, and not very many frankly, road widening projects across the community, purchasing right-of-way for future widening projects if those are needed. And then some projects were put off into the future, such as a new southern bridge crossing. And then there was a lot of emphasis on a connected bike and pedestrian system. Yeah, our thing that's been accomplished is we developed and adopted a prioritized project list, meaning that we identified a whole bunch of improvements that needed to be made over the 20-year horizon of this plan, which takes us through 2040. And we chunked them up into the near term, which is the first 10 years or so, the midterm, which is the next five years or so, and then the last five years, which is the long term. And then we developed a funding plan that was recommended to the council and the steering committee and adopted. I think what I would describe as key wins that have been accomplished so far, consistent with the reasons I said at the beginning about why I'm involved in transportation, is that, one, we elevated the importance of neighborhood safety. And when I say "we", I mean the whole community. This is something that we've heard throughout the whole process, in person, in writing, in emails, all that sort of stuff, at all the meetings that we've participated in. We elevated the importance of the pedestrian and bike network and infrastructure. That was, I would say, not being prioritized in the beginning, and CTAC felt, based on the members of the group, as well as what we heard from the community, that it was important to elevate that. We made a key decision, I think about a year and a half ago, that was moved forward by the council, that the priority would be to focus on continuing to have three-lane roads as the main road type in Bend for now. That might be something that changes in the future. And the reason that those are best for safety and connectivity, they work overall best across the community. The other thing I would add is that they're also a lot cheaper. They cost a lot of money to do five-lane roads across the community. But this really makes it much safer when someone is trying to cross a road, an elderly person or a blind person, if they only have to cross three lanes of traffic and not five. And that was the main reason we stuck with the three-lane roads. We put a little bit greater emphasis on transit and mobility hubs, although it is important to recognize that this TSP per se and its funding plan doesn't pay for transit. And that's something I can talk a little bit more about. And then we brought all of those priorities into the initial funding ask that was going to be presented to the community tomorrow through an initial bond measure. But as everybody probably knows, that's been put off because of the COVID crisis and because of the economic kind of pain that the community is feeling right now. We didn't feel it was appropriate to go forward. But all of those priorities are reflected in that initial funding ask. What is still to be decided? As I said earlier, the steering committee has on its agenda this Thursday to possibly revisit some of the goals. And while as a CTAC co-chair and my fellow co-chairs share this, we don't think that the goal should be reopened. They were adopted over a year ago. They've really been the foundation for the whole plan so far. The steering committee gets to make that decision on Thursday. The steering committee is also going to have a substantive discussion about policies. Policies are things like, for example, this question about the road type in Bend. And if we are going to widen a road or add more lanes to a road, what are the criteria that have to be met before that decision is made? And how does it influence things like safety of walking and biking? And what does it mean for the neighborhood as a whole? So policies shape all kinds of stuff, what the streets look like, the standards for design of streets. There is a whole new set of policies that was proposed by CTAC related to equity. It's the first time that I'm aware of in the city, really broadly speaking, that there are any policies that specifically address equity and certainly around transportation. And I think some of those may be controversial on Thursday. So Thursday's meeting is very important. It's the first time that the steering committee and council have actually talked in depth about the policy discussion. Then there's performance measures. How are we going to measure success? Things like, how do we measure safety? How do we measure the ideas that we're trying to improve, the mode split of how many people walk and bike, all those sorts of things. So as I said, there is going to be a steering committee this Thursday where that are going to focus on the policies and goals. And then the final steering committee meeting is on June 18th. Between this week and June 18th, there's a final CTAC meeting where we're mostly going to focus on the performance measure section here, because the committee as a whole hasn't really talked about that yet. And then forward the entire package on to the steering committee for their meeting on June 18th. So from a funding perspective, and I know I'm running out of time here, so basically, most of the money that the city already has and that it can devote to transportation is largely committed. That's the bottom line. So if we want to do any of the new stuff we know we need to do, which is what the TSP process and CTAC has been looking at, here's the starting place. Here's the projects we already know we need to do. What else needs to be done over the 20-year period? There's basically about a $650 million funding gap. Now, you'll hear some different numbers. They're close to these numbers. I'm trying to give you a sense of magnitude here, so don't, you know, don't get too caught up in if I got the exact number right. And in the near term, meaning that first 10 years, there's about a $380 million funding gap that CTAC had identified in its funding plan. That's about $300 million in projects and actual infrastructure, in road improvements and safety improvements, and walking and bike lane improvements, and bus shelters that need to be built. And then there's an administrative cost on top of that. And then there's programs. There's things like we want to continue to make investments on an annual basis in sidewalks. We want to implement the Greenway program. We need to implement all the transportation safety projects and programs. Those are paid for a slightly different way, so there's about $50 million of programs as well. So that's how you get to that gap. CTAC recommended that we use a combination of a bond measure, a TUF, a transportation utility fee, urban renewal funds in the core area, and a transportation system development charge increase. Those are the four funding strategies that we recommended be used. We need all of those, because the thing people need to remember is that each of these different funding tools have different restrictions on what it can and can't be used for. A bond measure can only pay for new capital improvement projects. It can't pay for maintenance of the new roads. A transportation utility fee is very flexible, can use for a lot of different things. Urban renewal mostly can pay for infrastructure, though I think also some program stuff as well. And then transportation SDCs can only be used for new infrastructure as well, can't be used for maintenance. So we need money for capital and operations maintenance and programs. So we're going to need a mix of funding sources as we move forward. The bond measure is the only tool that gets us a big chunk of money, and that's why it was on the table. The others also have, they all have different issues about how you approve them, right? Voters versus the council by itself. The only one that a council can do, I guess there's of significance, is the TUF. The urban renewal is also approved by the council. The SDC increase would also be approved by the council. But none of these get the amount of money that a bond does. So the bond measure was put forward, $190 million in total. It was about $180 million in projects and about 6% for administrative costs. It would have cost about $170 per person per year on the average homeowner. And this is kind of a quick summary of the projects that we would have gotten from it. East-west connectivity, major corridors, intersection improvements, bike-ped improvements, a little bit to transit, bunch of parkway improvements, neighborhood safety improvements, and some investments in technology. What I think's important about this, again, going back to the Y piece, is that we would have gotten about $50 million for walking, biking, and transit. And we would have probably gotten close to another $8 to $10 million also related to that, that are just part of the road projects that would happen. I think that's a really important point to make about this bond. It does a lot to move, it would have done a lot to move traffic and make the system work a lot more efficiently for cars and everybody else in the system. But it also would have made important investments in walking, biking, and transit. So that's what I have for you today. I'm going to shut up there.
Great. Thank you, Mike. So now we're going to give each of the three other panelists, the candidates, an opportunity to briefly introduce themselves, so you know who you're talking to. They can talk about what's important to them and all of this and what's at stake. And then we're going to open it up for questions. So let's just go in alphabetical order by first name. So Anthony Rodman, you are next.
Thanks, Sid, and thank you, Mike, and Nancy and Amber for doing this. I think we're all here because of one reason, and that is because transportation is the number-one priority for a lot of people here, and it turns out for most of the voters in Bend. Part of the polling underlying the transportation bond identified transportation across party lines, across demographics, as really the most important thing to Bendites. So I think Ben has also told us exactly what they want out of a transportation plan as part of, again, the transportation bond conversation. This wasn't a huge study. I had some problems with some of the polling, but it was pretty clear that we told the city we wanted to get our kids to school safely. We want options for transportation. We want connectivity. We want true low-stress, level-one or level-two transportation options, and really choices for getting around our city, whether you're choosing to drive, you're choosing to ride a bike, or you're choosing to walk, or if you don't have a choice because you're not able-bodied, or because you don't own a car. It was clear from that polling process, which is one of the reasons why I'm in this race, running for city council, position two. People don't want freeways running through their neighborhoods. I think that the desire to have three lanes versus five lanes that Mike identified is really important. We need to give people choices so that we have fewer of the surges that all of us see around school pickup, school drop-off. We need to address the 40 hotspots and work together with the school district, have an actual intergovernmental relationship with the school district, to address those 40 spots where the school district is telling us, this isn't a safe place for kids. People in Bend don't want to have 40, the top 40 worst places for kids to get to and from school. And I also want to disabuse people of the notion that this is a developer versus non-developer dichotomy. Proponents of smart growth, developers, recognize that a safe, connected transportation system is good for all of us. It's good for developers. It's good for realtors. It's good for the human beings who we need to focus on as actually using the transportation system. And I think we need to aim really high on our goals for transportation. I think we need to aim high today. I think we need to aim high on Thursday. I'm hoping the council sticks with what CTAC, the democratic process set forth, has identified as goals. I think we're really shooting ourselves in the foot if we look back with regret in 2040, when there's 153,700 of us, if we haven't set really aggressive goals for safety. Zero kids getting killed on the way to school is a reasonable goal. In fact, I think any other goal is irresponsible, just like you would think of your own children. The people, again, the people of Bend have told us that they want to trust the democratic process. They entrusted this process, or we've all entrusted this process, to CTAC. They've told us that they want three lanes instead of five, where it's possible. So I hope that the next phase of TSP honors that democratic process, puts us in a position to succeed for ourselves, for our elders, for our kids, for the climate, and that we can look back in 2040 again, when there's 153,700 of us, and be really proud of what we've accomplished as a community. So thanks again, everybody.
Great. Thank you, Anthony. And if my skills are correct in organizing, I believe Kat is up next.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm really glad to be here this morning, and I appreciate appreciate all of your time to invest in this really important issue. Just want to introduce myself. My name is Kat Mastrangelo, and it's a really long last name, but it rhymes with Michelangelo, so it's not quite as hard as it is scary. I really appreciate, Mike, your presentation on this. And, you know, I come from a healthcare background, not a transportation background. But a lot of what you said really resonates with what I think is important in this community. Anthony, I really agree with all that you had to say as well. But one thing that we've been talking about on a regional level is healthcare, health in all policies. And so this transportation system, I think, dovetails really nicely with that. And, you know, by health, we mean things like, things that are already reflected in this plan, safety, having safe ways to get to school, having safe ways to get to work. It's also making sure that we are not adding more vehicle miles and helping to improve our local and our global climate. And then, you know, part of what makes a healthy community is people having jobs that they need, having meaningful lives. And so transportation is really essential to employers being able to get employees to work. It's important for people to be able to get to social events that they need to and to school. And one thing I think if we've learned from all of this COVID stuff, and as much as I wish I could be there talking to you all in person, we've learned that there's a lot we can do without getting in the car and going somewhere. And so we've all noticed the cleaner skies. We have all noticed we have more time in our day to maybe do some other things. You know, I have to commute to my job in normal times across town. And when we first moved here, that commute was maybe, I don't know, eight to 10 minutes. And more recently, that's been more like 15 minutes. And it doesn't sound like a lot, five minutes, but five minutes twice a day, five days a week, 48 weeks out of the year, that really adds up to something that's not insignificant. And so the goals that this transportation plan has, I think, are worthwhile. I have a lot to learn about some of the specifics on some of these issues, but they seem to make a lot of sense to me. And the fact that we have had some very engaged and knowledgeable people working on this plan and working through some of these issues gives me a lot of confidence. This is a good plan. I agree with Anthony when he said that we need to plan big, because 153,000 people in this community, it could easily be more than that in 20 years. And so we don't want to be 20, 30, 50 years down the road, regretting the decisions we've made today because we didn't think big enough. You know, 50 years ago was 1970, right? And so what was this city doing in 1970, thinking about where we were going to be today? And maybe we would have done some things differently as we were opening up neighborhoods and planning things. I agree that the intergovernmental agency piece of this is really important, because working with the park district and the school districts, I've had kids in the Ben Le Pine schools, and I usually made them ride the bus, in part because, you know, dropping a kid off at Pilot View Middle School even 15 years ago was just a nightmare. And it's not safe, and it takes up time, and it's wasteful in so many different ways. So how do we work with the schools, work with the parks, get those east-west connections and the north-south capacity built so that Bend continues to be a place that is very livable for all of us, and also a place that welcomes new people? Because I don't think, I think smart growth is important, and I think we need to be welcoming to people. And to that extent, we need to be welcoming to all people. And so I really appreciated Mike's comments on this being an equity issue, because certainly there are neighborhoods that are safer and more easily traversed than others. And so how do we look as a community and start to make up some of those differences, but also use the growth and use the planning process? Where are we putting homes? What are we requiring in new What are we requiring in new neighborhoods? What does that look like? And not have to go back and retrofit because we didn't do it right the first time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kat. And now we will move to the third of our candidate panelists, Melanie Keebler. And Melanie, you are on.
Thanks Sid, thanks everyone for being here. I agree with everyone else, this is a really important conversation for Bend's future. And I think, to Kat's point that she just made, what we're seeing right now is an attempt to catch up on a transportation system plan that is not where it needs to be for the rate of growth that we've experienced and for the folks that live here. So I'm Melanie Keebler, I'm running for position one on the Bend City Council. I'm a local attorney, I represent, in my work, I represent crime victims and criminal cases and protective orders. And I also grew up here in Bend, so I have some of those same memories about what traffic was like here in the long-ago times, you know, and what it's like now and how our roads look. And I think what you're going to see from me in my campaign, and probably in some public comments this Thursday for the steering committee, is a real commitment to a couple of things that Mike mentioned, you know, equity and really safety. And I think that is one of the biggest things that Anthony said, that we've heard from the community, that we need a safe transportation system, and it needs to be safe for everyone that uses it, all types of users, not just people in cars. And of course, we want to keep everyone safe, but we have to also understand that there are some more vulnerable users of our system. We saw the picture of Charlene, who is blind and needs to get around town on foot, and what can we do to make sure that she can do that safely and feel safe to do that? And that's the same for people biking, walking, kids going to school, they need to feel safe. And one thing I want to talk about a little bit is, there can sometimes be this idea that when we talk about promoting safety and promoting options for people that walk or bike or use transit, that that somehow is anti-car, or that's bad for people that drive cars. Because there are people that choose to drive a car, there are people that need to drive a car, maybe, to get around. And I just don't think that that dichotomy is true, because when we induce people and we help people take other transportation options, when we help people feel safe riding their bike across town instead of to go to work, instead of driving their car, when we help people feel safe to walk down to the grocery store, so they don't have to drive for that short trip, we've removed cars from the system. And that can help people that are driving have less congestion. So I think, kind of reframing the way we think about our transportation system and how users, kind of, how the different users meld together in promoting the goal of safety and traffic flow, we don't have to think about people butting heads. Another thing you're going to hear from me is that I strongly believe we should set a vision zero goal. Vision zero means zero serious injuries or fatalities that are traffic-related. It's a bold goal, and I agree with Anthony and Kat that that's what we need to be doing right now. And what that goal does is it really kind of plants a flag that says, this is our value. We don't want human loss of life to be part of our transportation system, and we're committed to working towards that. Are we going to achieve that, you know, in the next five years? Maybe not. But we are going to commit ourselves to it, and every time we fail, and some horrible tragedy happens where someone is seriously injured or killed, we are going to look to that goal and say, that goal motivates us to do even better. What can we do to fix this problem so that safety is paramount and our transportation system is not resulting in serious injuries or deaths? So that's something that I'm committed to continuing to comment on and promote going forward. And then finally, I think, you know, the meshing of climate with the transportation system is incredibly important. You saw the graph that Mike put up about emissions from vehicles. And so I think it's really, that's another reason that it's really important to help people understand their safe ways to get out of their cars and use other options, maybe not every day, but as much as possible, to really reduce those vehicle miles traveled as much as we can, even as our population continues to grow, which I think it will even through the economic crisis that we're experiencing right now. So I think keeping that climate lens is really important as we move forward, and we're looking at goals and policies for our transportation system, and that's another thing that I'll be coming on going forward as well. So thanks, everyone, for being here. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Melanie. So now we get to move into the question and answer portion. And as I said at the very beginning, and for those of you who came in late, there are two ways to ask a question. You can open up your participants' panel and find the raise hand down at the bottom of that panel, and we will just call on people to ask their questions in the order in which they raise their hands, or you can enter your question into the chat box. I'm opening that chat panel and do that, and those will then be read to the panelists by Amber. So also, please, keep your question to a question. You can have a short setup for it, so that we understand who you're talking about, and if you want to address it to a particular panelist, please mention that when you ask your question as well. So with that, I think we should move into the questions and answers. There was something in the chat box that came up first, so I will turn it over to Amber to read that question to our panelists.
All right. Connie asks, what can be done to make our public transit more aligned with our service economy? Even our limited and inadequate buses do not run in the evening nor on Sundays.
So, any of our panelists, if you want to respond to that, unmute yourself and go.
I could take a crack unless Kat or Melanie want to answer that. You know, one of the things I've been really inspired by, and I hope that, you know, on the other side of coronavirus, this gets some more attention, was the mobility lab at Oregon State's project with smaller vehicle public transportation, the pilot program that you've seen with the Sprinter vans around town. That's obviously not the panacea for Connie's question, but I think it's a good one, because we need more people to use more transit. I personally would love to use transit more often, I don't use it enough. I think there is at least a sense that it's sort of a chicken-and-the-egg issue, is, are there enough routes? Well, there aren't enough routes, because people accuse or sort of disparage transit as not being an adequate system. I think we need to look really hard at, you know, innovating public transportation in Bend. I don't think we have to look at, you know, going straight to a regional transit authority when we have really good, I would call them little bets, that we can take on transit in Bend, and we can have something extraordinary. I think leaning really heavily on what we've seen out of the mobility lab, things like that, expanding that, expanding more smart transit options, like Mike referred to, you know, working with large employers. What do you need for your employees to provide transit at particular times of the day so that it's actually being used? So I would like to see transit become a much bigger part of life for not only the UGB, but Central Oregon, and working with, you know, with our regional partners also. So that would be my response to Connie's question. I appreciate the question, Connie.
Great.
I just, Ben Sid.
Sure.
I just wanted to point out, I agree with everything Anthony said, and I want to point out that people may not know that we have a, you know, we have a transportation organization that runs our limited buses here. And people need to understand that they don't have their own taxing district to raise funds. They are grant-funded, or, you know, money that the legislature appropriates through some other means. They don't have, like, the Parks and Rec, or the city, or the Schuyls Library system, who takes a little bit out of your property taxes to help make that funding base. Our transit system doesn't have that. And that is a barrier, I think, to expanding to the point where we have regular buses that are running more frequently. And I agree with Anthony, it's sort of a chicken-and-the-egg. You know, I had a friend who's like, well, I'd like to take the bus down to my yoga class, you know, I'd like to do that instead of driving, but there's just no routes that where I have to wait an hour, and then wait an hour. And people, you know, users are going to be looking at that, and that's going to be a barrier for them using transit. So we have to really work on finding ways to invest in transit, either through, you know, as much as we could do in the GO bond that was proposed. You know, I've sent it off to our senators, because in one of these bills, there was a proposal to invest the money in transit throughout the country, and I, you know, said, yes, we need to do that, especially right now, and we know ridership is down because people are avoiding public transit due to the coronavirus. So I just wanted to make that point, that funding can be a barrier for transit, and that's something that the city has to be really intentional about, helping the transit system with that issue.
And I'd like to add just another twist on this, too. You know, I know a lot of the people at our clinic are working in the service industry, and a lot of them live, a lot of them live in Redmond, or Prineville, or outside of Bend. And so how are we, I mean, this is intimately connected to affordable housing that is accessible to places where people need to work. And so where do we have hubs of people that are working and services a little harder, maybe because it's hotels and those are spread out? But there ought to be ways that we can facilitate that. Sun River, for example, has a van that comes, and, you know, people can get on the van to drive down to Sun River to work there, because they know that that is one of the barriers to finding the employees that they need. So are we looking outside the box? It's not just roads, it's not just buses, but it's some of these other partnerships that could make a real difference. And then I think there's also an issue with, you know, when are we timing when people start to shift? I love that part of Mike's presentation. Are we working with large employers so that capacity on roads is different and we don't have to keep building so much?
If I could add one thing real quick to Connie's question, and that is just to make sure people understand that when the state legislature passed the transportation bill in 2017, dating myself there, the, in it was new payroll taxes gone statewide that we're all starting to pay now, and that is actually returning money to local governments. It goes to the county first and then gets distributed. And a fair bit of the new investments are coming to transit in our region. And it's important for people to understand that you're going to see more frequent buses, you're going to see the schedule of buses extended, I'm not quite sure about Sundays yet and how far on Sundays, and you're going to see some new routes added. That is all going to start, it's probably been delayed because of COVID, but it's all in the books to start that. So we're actually going to see some new improvements, it's going to make quite a difference, and a fair bit of money is coming to our region as a result of that. And it's one of the reasons we focused less, we didn't really focus on the operational side. The other thing that you should know is about a million and a half dollars comes out of the city of Bend's general fund right now to go to transit operations. And that is going to continue for the foreseeable future, until, as Melanie suggested, maybe we have our own taxing district, but we are going to see some real improvements, and important for people to know that is coming, and the plans are in the works, and you'll start to see it rolled out later this year or next year at the latest.
Great, thanks, Mike. Next up is a question from Roger, and Roger, you can go ahead and ask your question. You'll have, unmute yourself, because my button's not working. Roger? There you go.
Okay. Well, anyway, thank you, Sid, and thank you, Mike, for that excellent presentation, and especially I'd like to thank the candidates for stepping up in their willingness to serve. My question has to do with the coronavirus, okay? I'd like to know, the transportation bond issue notwithstanding, okay? What other impacts might this pandemic have on the way you think about the transportation plan? And I'm thinking in particular, for example, walking streets, can we implement, are we, do we have an opportunity of making the downtown, a couple of the streets downtown Bend, convert into pedestrian-only streets, and then moving the general transportation plan to accommodate such a thing?
We would like to take that one first.
Anthony, if you don't want to jump in on this?
Happy to discuss what we've been working on, and it's not just me, but, you know, a lot of members of the community have brought that exact concern before the city council. And I would, I would say, I'm really grateful to the city council for taking the issue up on Wednesday. I think the downtown Bend Business Association has not, I believe, taken a formal position on it, but is working on the plan along with city staff. And when I say the plan, I mean, there are several proposals, one of which is one that I and some restaurant owners have made to the city council downtown regarding, I like to call it opening streets rather than closing the streets, making them more available to retailers, restaurants, who want to use parking spots or parts of the street to facilitate, one, their business in a socially-distanced, safe manner. This is not a Bend-specific idea, this has been happening all over the country. It seems to be taking off. I would say in the last 72 hours, we were one of the first, that I'm aware of, public proposers of this plan, but I would say, you know, since Thursday or Friday, several cities have contemplated the exact same plan, which is basically outdoor dining, accommodating 12, even 15 feet of space so that people can dine safely, because we really need to get people back to work in a safe manner. Safety has to be priority number one, we have to follow the guidance of not only the state, but our local public health officials. But they're telling us, for restaurants to operate safely, for these businesses to be employing people again safely, they're going to need more space than what they have right now indoors. And I frankly think that there's people who are resisting going to these restaurants, going to these retailers, going to these personal services businesses, because they know they will have to be indoors, and they will have to be in proximity to other people in a way that's not safe. So Roger, I think, you know, you hit the nail on the head. I think this is low-hanging fruit for the city to support our businesses and give them an environment in which, you know, we can reopen in a safe way. So hopefully, we have some movement on this on Wednesday. I'm really encouraged by the response I've had from businesspeople, and from staff, and from electeds. So thanks for the question.
Yeah, and I'll add that Moi just posted in the chat that you could email the council before their meeting on Wednesday if you support that idea, and public comment is important, I think, for them to hear, and that it's not just, you know, restaurant owners particularly, but if there's other people in the public, I think this is a good idea that you let them know that. I can just give a little anecdote, that, you know, I walked down to my post office downtown on Friday, it was a beautiful night, there's a lot of people out, unfortunately, not a lot of people wearing masks, I was wearing my mask, and it would have been lovely if I could have given myself some more space around folks by walking in the street on Minnesota or Oregon, instead of on the sidewalk, where if there's even just a few groups of people, you're pretty close when you pass by each other. And, you know, I can't control if another person wears a mask, I can control myself, but, you know, there's a risk they're involved. And so I think this helps mitigate that risk by giving space to people to actually distance themselves, like Anthony's saying, whether they're dining or just walking downtown to do business. So yeah, please do email the council if you like that idea.
Great, thank you. Amber, I believe we've got some questions in the chat, would you like to take that?
We do. Craig is curious whether the current TSP has, does anything to enable the use of electric cars?
The answer is yes, I don't know if Mike wants to speak to that a little bit, or you Sid?
I can, really briefly. There is, in one of the policies, there's a policy related to electric vehicles about promoting the infrastructure and sort of accommodating them. In particular, the issue is charging infrastructure, and we really have to develop a transportation, electrification, infrastructure plan essentially, and that's what the policy and one of the related actions calls for. But, yeah, it's really a question about infrastructure largely, where can you charge and how do you make it accessible? And how do you ensure that it's also for people who maybe don't live in a single-family home, if they live in an apartment, or some other kind of, you know, condo kind of setting, how can you have infrastructure in those sorts of places as well? Though it's not just for a certain group of people that can use an electric vehicle.
I'd like to add one short thing about that, which is that there was also talk about the city itself leading the way. And as the city expands its own fleet of vehicles, which is not insignificant, that they be moving to non-fossil fuel-powered vehicles, like electric vehicles, and that's part of what government's supposed to do, is to model that behavior for the community. And hopefully, we can get Castleville Transit to follow a similar one.
And I'll just, before I read the next question, my op-ed comment is that that seems to be the kind of opportunity that serves both the goals of the TSP and of our Climate Action Plan. that seems to be the kind of opportunity that serves both the goals of the TSP and of our climate action plan. So if there are ways in which the city meets those goals synergistically, that's really powerful. Okay, next question in the chat from Karen. I've been reading about Vancouver, B C's transportation plan, which has reduced single vehicle use by fifty percent over the last ten years. I understand that in two thousand and six, Vancouver passed a resolution not to broaden their local streets or add more lanes on local streets. Are you familiar with this plan? How can we implement smart transit? I don't think, well, these are two questions. Let's start with that one first. Are you familiar with the Vancouver transportation plan? Could any of the lessons there be, be put to work in that?
I think I'm familiar just a little bit with their plan. And I think if I'm remembering correctly, there's a bridge in Vancouver that they opened up for pedestrians and bikes that there was a lot of resistance to initially, but then once it was put in, everyone loves it, they're all users. So I know that I heard that from Vancouver. I can speak generally to that idea of not broadening your streets. I mean, one principle that's going to guide a lot of my decision making, you know, if I'm on council, it's going to be the principle that it's called induced demand. When you widen a road, initially people drive on it and think, oh, wow, there's not as much traffic. It's really nice to drive on this road. I think I'll drive on it more often. And over the years, what will happen is that road, the driving will meet the induction of, you know, the space that's there and it will become congested again. And so the key principle is that that widening roads does not solve congestion, nor does it promote safety. And it's expensive, let me think, Sid, or Mike pointed out early on. So I, you know, I agree with that principle that they have in their, in their plan from two thousand and six. And I, that's why I'm supporting not changing anything in our policies about keeping us to a principle of three lane roads or even two. And basically, let's try every other option first before we make a road bigger. Just because of all the things that I've just talked about. So that's, that's kind of how I would interpret what they have done and say we need to include that in our plan as well.
I don't, yeah, I don't know about the Vancouver plan in particular, but, but I have lived in cities before and definitely an inducement to take public transportation and not take a car is the fact that it's really hard to drive in cities and parking is expensive. And if you have a parking spot, the last thing you want to do is take your car because you have a parking spot and who knows if you're going to have one when you get back. So definitely, I think people that live in places with, you know, compact cities, they end up walking more. People in New York City walk a lot more, even the people in Bend. And it's different walking, it's your day to day walking. So I think there's, there's that issue. And if there are ways that we can do that through density in our community and induce people to walk because they live near where they need to go, whether that's shopping or work, then that just reduces the need for cars.
If I could hop in for one second, it is eleven o'clock and some of our panelists, you know, like have jobs and things they have to get to. So i- if you do need to leave, don't feel bad about it, go ahead and go. And those of you who can stay to answer more questions, we're really happy to have you do that.
The second part of Karen's question was about smart transit. So, you know, if we're, the comment reads, I don't think people are going to stand out in the weather waiting for a bus that may or may not come on time. They might take transit if they could call it up and be taken where they want to go and return approximately when they want to. Thoughts?
Yeah, I would go back to, you know, we have, we have to innovate as a transportation system. I think if you look at where we are today, this, this transportation system is, is not going to work for us in twenty years. So I think the kind of goals we set right now, let's, let's use additional lanes as an absolute measure of last resort, like Melanie mentioned. And let's, let's use every possible tool we have to innovate. And if that's providing the kind of infrastructure we need to get more people on, you know, micro mobility or electric bikes or shared, shared ride share options, the smaller transit options like I think have been so successful through the Ride Bend pilot program. I, I totally agree with Melanie, let's use an extra lane as kind of the last resort. And before then, let's use Bend ingenuity, the kinds of things that have brought us like SLS Bend and Ride Bend and even the, you know, the river, the river shuttle infrastructure. Let's use everything we possibly can before we put more asphalt in because pavement is forever. And I think we owe it to ourselves and our kids and, you know, the, the person who even moves here tomorrow to make this the exceptional city that, that we all think it is right now.
Another question from Alex. And one point I've made at the C-TAC meetings is that bike lanes in the door zone next to parked cars are dangerous. And these are common in Bend. I know the ideal is a separated bike lane, but these are expensive and take time to implement. What can we do to add more greenways where slower speeds and fewer cars make bike riders safer?
I don't know if anyone has gotten out to ride on the greenways recently where they put up some signs partially closing the roads to cars to open them up for more people and bikes. I think that's a step in the right direction. We've seen some other cities that are doing these kind of temporary projects where they're opening roads to bikes and people and discouraging cars to be on those roads. And then they're saying, oh, we're just going to keep this, this is great, right? Because people feel safe and they feel like they can really get in, get out and outdoors safely. And they feel safer because there's fewer cars in that road. So I think we need to leverage our existing greenway system. I think we need to expand it. I think we need to look at how much it's actually reducing car travel on those greenways. And if it's not working, what we can do to fix that? Because I think having that, what's called that low stress network where people feel comfortable. And when I say people, I mean, not just people that cycle every day, but people that cycle on the weekends, people that want to get out with their kids every once in a while. They feel like there's a route they can take that's low stress, it's not going to make them feel unsafe. That's what we really need to be working for, towards. And Alex, when I read your question, I also thought of that spot along Franklin where you cross Walin Bond with the cars and the door and the bike lane disappears and then it comes back. I mean, that never feels good when I, when I go through there. And so I think we need to look at, you know, long term, building things like protected bike lanes or just having more consistent infrastructure that makes sense for people that are cycling so that they, they know what to expect and they feel safer.
Yeah, and Alex's point about the expense of these protections for the most vulnerable users on the road, kids getting to and from school. I'm willing as a, as a member of this community to do what is necessary for my kids, your kids, my elders, all of us, to get to and from school, work, shopping safely in whatever mode of transit they choose. I don't care if you're in a car, if you're in a wheelchair, if you are walking. Part of the work of government is to ensure that people are safe using the mode of transportation that they choose. And we, we have an obligation to do that. I think, I think also when you look at the, like the kinds of things that we're concerned about with getting doored, you know, there are, I think there are little things we can do that are not that expensive. There are rumble strip options. There's using whatever we, you know, when, when we do deferred maintenance, making small changes, calming or larger, larger paths on corners that prevent people from getting a right hand driver turning into them, whether they're walking or using a wheelchair or using a bicycle. So I, one, I think we owe it to ourselves to pay for a safe transportation system. And two, I think that we should be really innovative about the things that are not expensive to keep people safe, no matter what means of transportation they use.
There was another question in the chat about transit to Mount Bachelor and popular trailheads. I mean, we all know that sometimes that's a mosh if you're going up either to ski or to hike. Thoughts about that?
Well, I think we already have the Mount Bachelor bus. And I will just speak for my kids that, that would take that, you know, part of it is just, are you going to get a seat on the bus because it is so popular at certain times? And then, you know, what are the options for coming back? And I think expanding some of that makes it, you know, it gets to be a little bit of a chicken and an egg. People don't want to take it if the infrastructure's not there. But it's hard to justify the infrastructure if you don't have the demand. So, you know, whatever it takes to get over that hump, I think that's a great idea. And any of us who have, you know, gone out on a beautiful summer day and found no parking at the trailheads, boy, you know, if there was some kind of central place where you could pick up a, a bus that could, could drop you off and pick you back up. I think with some of that technology, you know when the bus is coming or whatever trans, whatever mode that is, so that you're not just standing out wondering, are they coming, are they not coming? That makes it a much more attractive option. So I, I think that would be a great thing. And it would be, of course, you know, some of that is outside the city limits. So how much does the city have to influence that versus working with some of our partners? And, you know, at the, at the state level or the parks or whatever else that might be.
I'm glad you brought up the partnership issue, right? Because some of these trailheads, we're also talking about a permitting system. And that's, you know, outside of the purview of the city per se. But it seems like those are, there are some ways with, that partnership and better communication could really help, right? Maybe there's transit for the people who are permit holders to go up to Green Lake on a certain day or.
I mean, one of, one of the beauties, we're turning into a university city. And that there, there's been some heartburn. I think we've heard a lot of folks in the community in the last decade, you know, be concerned about traffic related to the university, be concerned about where folks are going to live, where folks are going to park. But one of the beauties of having a university, and I don't mean to keep laying all this responsibility at the feet of Oregon State University, but let's innovate. Let's use being a, a small university town to make bold, innovative moves like you're talking about, Kat. I mean, if, if we can have, I mean, I love taking the Bachelor Shuttle. I think that if everybody feels confident that that is the best way to get up there and we have one more, you know, one more public transportation leg perhaps from the east side that could connect you to the Park and Ride. And people know they're not going to get left at the mountain. That's a, that's a fear, I don't know if it's warranted or not. You know, maybe we get more people on those, on those vehicles. And I, I think, again, let's, let's use what we have at the university to innovate. I think there are people, there are brilliant minds there who are willing to take up these types of challenges, especially with the program there being, with one of the programs there being so focused on the travel and tourism industry.
We've got one more question that I would like all our candidates to address. And so this is about the metrics for the TSP that are being considered soon. What would each of you see as an appropriate twenty year goal for the percentage of trips being by foot, transit or bike? The current draft metric is that it is five point five percent now and would increase to eight point two five percent in two thousand and forty. So very specific metric question. How do you feel about that increase in the draft?
I can start with that. I listened into the meeting where C-TAC was talking about that. And so just to lay a little context, you know, when we're talking about metrics, we're talking about what are things we can measure and how are we going to measure them? And then what are we going to set as the goal for what we want those measurements to be in twenty years? And so when I reviewed the metrics, I thought this is way too low. This is not very ambitious at all. And I'd like to see it, you know, twenty percent or more. I mean, we're talking about twenty years from now. And, and I know that Leanne, who asked the question, has also pointed out in her role as a, as a bike advocate that what about focusing on certain types of trips too? Can we say trips under X amount of miles, like to the grocery, to go shopping, to go get your haircut, whatever? Can we try to see if we can get an even higher number of those trips to be by bike? So I don't mean, I don't know if I have a specific number right now, but much higher than this and much more ambitious because these goals and metrics are going to drive decision making and drive how we frame our thinking about our transportation system going forward. So I think we need to set our sights high.
Kat, do you want to weigh in on that? Sure. You know, I don't know, I don't know a lot about the specific metrics and the numbers. And I don't know if these are ambitious goals or unambitious goals. But I think we have some opportunities to look at some other places. And what are, what have they been able to achieve? Where are the, the best practices happening? And what does that look like now? And then what are they anticipating being at as they continue to grow their own infrastructure? But I think even within the city, we have some opportunity to perhaps look at some neighborhoods like Northwest Crossing, where, where a school is nearby, where you have some shopping and restaurants and people work nearby there. What does it look like within that microcosm? And what have we been able to achieve with that? And then use that also as some kind of guidance towards what this could be. I like the idea of, of not just looking at every trip exactly the same, but yeah, can we? I, I thought that was a good point, Melanie, that, you know, there's some that are more amenable to, to being decreased than others. And so what does that look like as well?
Yeah, I agree with both of you, Kat and Melanie. I mean, this number is nowhere near high enough. I don't know what the most aggressive number staff has presented, but I would, I would guess that it would be somewhere in the fifteen to twenty percent range. And I think that that would be reasonable. I think a bold goal would be, would be even higher than that. I totally agree with you, Kat. We need to look at new neighborhoods being put, put in newly expanded areas at the margins to ensure that they have diverse infrastructure so that I can, because people, let's be honest, people aren't going to ride their bikes much longer than two and a half miles. Certainly vulnerable users aren't going to be able to ride their bikes very far at all. So we need to put land use planning to work to ensure that these neighborhoods are complete and that they are the types of places where you can choose to walk to go shopping. Your kids can walk to school, your kids can ride their bikes to school. I think that if we, if we look at transportation, like I think all of us agree, transportation is climate. Transportation is social justice. Transportation is affordable housing. Transportation is economic equality. And if we look at, if we look at these issues as completely connected, I don't think fifteen to twenty percent is unrealistic. I also don't think it's unrealistic because we're, we're not going to be transporting ourselves and our families in the same way. We're not going to be, I, I hope that we're not as dependent on fossil fuels in twenty years. I hope that there are micro mobility options like we, we will see from innovative places like tech industries like we have here in Bend that allow us to make trips conveniently without spending money on, on gasoline and spending money on expensive roads. So the metric for me is not high enough, I would like to see it much higher.
Ted, if I can add one thing real quick, this is Mike. I would just point out to people that I, I agree with everything that's been said so far on the performance measures. I think that the metrics and the targets and the metrics list is pretty good, but it's the targets in particular that are important. There are some metrics that could be added as well. But I, I just really want to encourage people to weigh in on this one with both C-TAC at its meeting on June second and then again, at the final steering committee meeting on June eighteenth. Some of the metrics on safety, I think, were the same issue. We felt, many of us felt like the, we should be setting a zero fatality goal, but that's not what was initially presented to us by staff. And we also felt like the VMP goal, the vehicle miles traveled, basically the goal that, the target that was presented to us would have been to allow it to continue to increase. And, well, I can understand the motivation for why it's a very difficult thing to do. I still think consistent with what Melanie was saying, we want to set more aspirational goals here. And we really need to be look at how do we, how do we be reducing vehicle miles traveled at least per capita? And frankly, from a climate perspective, it should be the total vehicle miles traveled for the community, which is a much harder nut to crack. But these targets are setting a trajectory and a direction for us. And it's important for us to work on these. And I think C-TAC, as well as the steering committee in the city council, will need to hear clearly from the community about this.
If you don't mind, I'd like to actually make a comment on this as well. Just a general comment on metrics as a whole. And that I think it's going to be really important that council in particular, but also staff and, and the community perhaps change their mindset on the purpose of metrics. Metrics are not to see, how did we do and then hold? Metrics are not to see, how did we do and then hold people accountable. Accountability is, is an important piece of having metrics. But the real benefit of having metrics and setting intermediate goals is to get a sense of how we're doing on what we're trying to do and then being prepared to make changes to what we're doing that reflect what needs to be done in order to reach those goals. And my goodness, if we get, if we exceed our pathway towards our 2040 goal, let's reset the goal. These things are not etched in stone, okay? And, and if something happens and says that that goal is simply not realistic and it absolutely cannot be done, let's go for something that we can. So anyway, I just want to say for metrics in general, let's not use them for blame. Let's use them to improve our transportation system. I'll shut up now. Okay, maybe I won't. I just like, if there are no other questions, Amber's or anything else in the...
Some great comments, take time to peek at them, but I think we're ready to close up.
Great, so I want to thank you all for, for joining us in this. And in particular, our four panelists, Mike, Anthony, Kat, and Melanie. This, we will have other topics of importance in the city of Bend and we'll certainly let you know when they're coming.